Some of you went on and saw the different areas and things that he's been doing. And that's my, that's my whole point of this thing. It came from, it came from whether or not we were going to spend money to fix those, that trailer's awning. We had $10,000 budgeted to make a repair to the awning. And really, the awning needs to be replaced.
I, I mean, I think Mike said it sort of best, which is, I mean, the one thing that I would add sort of to that is, you know, what maybe is a little bit different in this scenario from sort of future scenarios is that, you know, we have a potential strategic plan that we want to maybe validate or confirm and then make decisions based off of. It sort of isn't exclusively saying, let's take this data and then make some decisions. It's almost that we're being a little bit more proactive, which is a little bit different than what I think the board's done in the past, which is nice. But at the end of the day, like I said, it's, I think it's all and above. It's, we need to make decisions based off of, you know, as much up-to-date data as we have as possible. And if, let's say, five, you know, plays into four and the studies show that, you know, we can do four and, you know, we spend the dollars for four and, you know, three years from now or so, we move into the, into the municipal building and we're saving the district $55,000 a year for 20 years. I mean, that's, that's almost like the most, the best $8,000 or $9,000 we could have ever spent. It's almost a no-brainer. But we have to make sure that we're making the right decisions because we may come back and we say we can't do it. And you know what? Then we didn't waste however many dollars trying to move into the municipal building. But, you know, even if it's fixing the awning, the $10,000 for that, or if it's spending money to demolish a trailer, or, you know, there's a lot of different things that, you know, although this is $5,000, it can save us from doing a lot more, or it can give us the initiative to go do those other things that would save the district money. So it's, I look at it as it's almost saving the district money in both ways. Either we're gonna do those things or we're not. But either way, $5,000 is less than doing everything else that we are thinking about doing.
So why don't we vote on it?
Roll call.
This is at five, right?
On five only.
We're voting on five.
On five only.
Who's second?
Why can't we roll them both together?
No.
No, the motion's only on five right now.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
No.
Mrs. Lindsay?
No.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Napanoli?
Yes.
You want to revisit number five now, or four, excuse me?
Well, Matt, I would propose we table it, pending results of Mr. Haber's reports. Like, just, you know, the other thing that came up, there is a draft lease term, and I know it sounds really good, but I like it better when legal can review because, like, terms like other good and valuable consideration make me nervous. I wouldn't sign it if it were my house. And so now that we have legal that we could, you know, ask about it, like, we're far cry from being ready to move in there. I have a lot of problems with conflicts of interest and keeping the business separate and the privacy that that space offers. So I think I would feel more comfortable if we had a third-party review, space utilization, because the central office staff is a fixed number of people and that's not going to change. And so it's just a matter of the best space for them to do their work and, you know, what are their needs and are we, and we can do all that ourselves as far as privacy and, you know, their meeting space. I know that it's been done in the past, but the, it's a rotating door. Now the general's not going to be here and you have new staff, you have new requirements, perhaps, you know? So I wouldn't rush into anything, but...
So I, I think, it was basically like the, the study. The study's going to drive a lot of things. When the study comes through, if we see that we can do the move to the town hall, then we'll spend a few dollars with the attorneys to write up an actual lease. I just wanted to show you where, you know, a draft thing that just gave you an idea of what it was going to be. And then we work on the, on the plans and see if it's, if it's a viable option.
So I guess the formal motion is to table it?
Table four.
Table four.
For my vote today.
I think you should vote on tabling it too, right?
Do I have a second for that?
Second.
The table?
Yeah, because it's going to be...
Well, so we should have officially done this before.
So can we go roll call the table number four till a later date?
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Napanoli?
Yes.
All right, go to the cause. Uh, committee reports we went through, correspondence, I'm happy to pass around a...
Wait, before we get into all that, wouldn't it make sense to do exec for the two open items since we have people waiting for the results of that?
Do you want to move exec? We can move that first.
Or do you want to allow?
Why don't we go up to?
The public sessions?
Up to open comments, right?
Do you have people waiting for that, too?
What are the other things to report on?
So, uh, committee reports we talked about, correspondence, I just got a letter from the county in regards to Sandy Collis, I'm happy to pass around and you may review for your, yourself. Discussion items, 501 Openaki.
I think we talked about that, except for, you know, it's, it's the, on the next, at the next board meeting, there'll be a resolution to set the minimum bid price for 501 Openaki Road.
So trailers, we've been discussing, Valley View Fields, Don, it's on there, that's your sort of baby, for lack of better words, but I'm glad to see it on there. Any progress or anything on that yet?
They are, they did, they did come out to the site to do the, to do the field, the subsurface exploration and, and to map it out and see all that. And he had, he has a lot of concerns about the, the wetlands that are right there. So there's, that's going to be difficult to move on any kind of, any kind of project there due to the fact that we have those wetlands right across the street. So he is working on all that and this is why you do these kinds of studies, because what we had before were, you know, nice local people that wanted to come in and fix it. But technically, you know, we have to find out whether or not we can get the permits to do these kinds of things through the DEP. And if we can, is it going to cost us $100,000, $200,000 in legal bills to actually, to, before we even get started? So this is the kinds of things that the, that the engineer is looking at. I don't have a final study yet and, and, Don, you asked me to put that on there. Do you have any comments about that?
No, other than it's a, it's a long overdue, I know it's, it's going to be expensive, but the, the field is just not suitable for what it's being used for today.
Totally agree. Pilot program for the Redmond Press side, we talked about that briefly earlier. Do you want to touch on that a little bit more?
So again, the pilot stands for payment in lieu of taxes and it's, it's a, a way to redevelop a site and, but the increased value of the property, the, the school will not see an increased revenues to the school, it'll only go to the town for a period of five years and then it'll revert back to the normal way it's done. So I don't really have anything else to say about that. If anybody else does ask me questions about it, having some experience with this, from Verona, we had a pilot program, it was a little different. The contract terms were different than this one, but it's basically the same idea.
So is this, this is not the same as what they did for Essling Lake?
Same thing.
It's the same thing?
But this is a proposal and it hasn't been approved and, just so you know, it's on your radar.
So I just want to be clear and maybe when the public portion, someone can get up and answer this question a little bit more in detail. I'm wondering if the, the school portion of those taxes that would have been increased, right? So using your example before, the property's valued at $1 million now, after it's developed, it's worth $10 million and now the assessed value is $10, so the taxes are based off of $10 million. Are, am I understanding it that the portion that would go to the schools is now going to the town instead? Or am I understanding that they're getting the tax benefit of not having to pay that school portion of their taxes?
That, it would depend on the terms, but, but the, all the tax dollars would go to the town. Whether or not they get a tax break is dependent on the terms.
So I'm just wondering, it sounds like an odd thing for the town to make decisions that...
We, we, so they get the development.
Maybe you can clarify that.
Yeah, we're going to have to need, maybe during the public portion, we can get some sort of clarity.
That may not be, maybe we should ask the...
We could also talk, we could talk about it next meeting. I mean, it's nothing that's going to, we need in the next month.
No, I'm just saying, maybe we should reach out to the town business administrator. Well, they've done presentations on it at their meetings, so maybe we can reach out to the town BA.
Well, it affects us enough where I think they may be interested in coming to talk to us.
You're right. Expansion of Unity Charter School.
That was an email that came out to all of you. I don't know if you want to talk about it. It is an issue here in Denville. We actually do have some students going to charter schools. I think we're up to, do you know if, it was nine, I think we might have 10 now.
It's a person, nine or 10.
I think, I think we have a new one, so 10. And just so people know in the audience is that when a charter school, when a student goes to a charter school, 90% of our other per pupil costs get transferred to the charter school, meaning if you, if your per pupil cost is $10,000, we have to send $9,000 to the charter school. Now, you don't really see a savings if you, if you lose eight different kids in, say in K to eight, one in each grade. There's not going to be a reduction in your staff, so you're really just losing that portion of your budget. So it can be a difficult, difficult thing in a district like ours. And one of the things that has been coming out is that whether or not districts that are performing, like we're performing, highly, highly performing districts, if, if these charter schools would be eligible to open in a town like Denville. So that's one of the things. And also that they're expanding in a town like Morris Town, which is close to us and we do have some students there. There was an email that came out from a concerned group of Morris County residents to, to the board, right? You all got it, right?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yeah.
Yeah, you got it. So that's why, that's why I figured we might put it up there for a topic.
You didn't get an email from them?
I thought it was just a mere update.
No, I got an email from them, but I sort of read it the other way, that they wanted, it was sort of advocating on growing the schools.
That's what I took away from it.
You did?
Right? Yeah. And I read it very quickly, but I...
I obviously don't know, but I just... Yeah, I had the sense that they were promoting it.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe there was a different one to you guys.
Maybe we saw a different email.
Oh, well, the one I saw, I'm pretty sure it talked more about this idea of expanding the opportunity for more children to attend the charter schools.
Well, either way, it's something we need to be, be aware of because it's just, it's taking dollars away from the school district and sending it somewhere else.
All right. I'm going to forward, it doesn't sound like everyone got that, so I'll forward it to you guys.
Yeah.
You can take a look at it. Any other, other?
Yeah, I have a quick report of, we met the, with the Foundation of Denville last week. I was at the meeting with Steve and Cindy. They, it was a fairly good, I think, frank meeting about their concerns about the use of technology in the district, the use of technology that they purchased through grants. They've had some concerns about technology either not being used or the district not necessarily being able to support some of the technology they've put in place. So they had a lot of concerns about that. It's a huge problem for them with their donors that they go back to year after year to ask for funding, so they were very concerned about it. A good aspect of the meeting was that Cindy was able to meet all of them and I think develop some points of contact for questions and concerns going forward. They also talked kind of in detail, I mean, the foundation, I think, kind of is synonymous with technology as far as we've been concerned. They're talking about the possibility of maybe refocusing their efforts in other areas to touch on all students, but not necessarily specifically or completely about technology. Because with technology, we, they have to get over the hump of it fitting into the curriculum and it has to fit into what we're doing in terms of technology. So what ends up happening is some of these grants get narrowed down, narrowed down to the point where they have a very limited number that they can actually deal with or the time it takes so long for them to get approved. So their, one conversation is then maybe changing their focus and doing other kinds of programs, other kinds of things that help the district, not necessarily to do technology. So, you know, it was, it was a good meeting. One of the other pieces of the meeting that came out is that most of them, their kids are kind of aging out of the district and they're looking for some new blood. They'd definitely like to approach kindergarten, parents coming into the district, try to get some new members into the foundation.
Did they mention when the next meeting might be?
No, they didn't. Their meetings are a little bit sporadic, Steve, I think they said. They're not really...
There's not a schedule, they don't tell me, right?
So no, they don't have, they don't have a second meeting yet.
Did they make some sort of, I mean, obviously, I'm sure we've made the commitment to go through those meetings, but do they say that they would get in touch with us when the next meetings are, so that we could be there?
Sure, I mean, I signed in for Mike, he was not, he wasn't able to make the meeting with him. Mike's really is on, on paper, right?
Yep.
All right, so that's good. Any other, other?
We have the issue of the agenda getting online three days before or 48 hours before.
Yeah, that was, I was telling, actually, Seth, yeah, and that's Jennifer's going to do. I got it back to, Steve and I went back and forth late because I was traveling for work and he got it back to Jennifer late. So I think, I don't know when you got it to her to get up.
I actually asked, I told Jennifer to go home because it was too late and I did it and I forgot to post it on the web. I did it in other spots, but I forgot to. So on Monday morning, she posted it.
Yeah, that's...
So it was an oversight. And we'll make sure, I, I asked Jennifer today to start putting together her SOPs.
Yeah, that's one of those important...
Yeah, I know.
What do you do? I'm sure it's long.
I guess that's the first taste of not having her. I asked, I said I would do something she was going to do and I forgot, so...
Let's open up for public comments. It's 9:50 and I do appreciate the public that has stayed, for staying through. Now, this is open to the entire district as a whole. Any comments, questions, concerns that we can try to answer? Happy to do so. You can form a line, it doesn't make a difference to me. Just your name and address for the record, please, and we try to keep your, your comments under three minutes, please. I can tell you, I do like this video, or this sound.
It's much better.
I can't hear a lot of it in here.
I can't hear anything over here. Really? Because of the air? How about you put a speaker in?
I mean, no.
Sorry.
Kevin Scollis, 12th and 13th Avenue, Denver.
Yeah.
Just to clarify a few things. The pilot program, yes. The administrator has a matrix that depicts the detail in regards to all, how that money is, how the income from, in particular, Essling Lake is allocated.
So they're taking the full, the full amount of taxes that's still being paid?
The business administrator has the matrix.
They have the matrix that spells out in detail, depicts in detail how that, how the income over five years will be distributed.
I got it.
So that's the best approach. But as far as the Redmond Press building is concerned, that has not come in front of the town council at all yet. I haven't heard anything in the council in that regard. Don, you had mentioned some other properties. I know there's the property of Memory Lane, although that's a small parcel, I think they're talking about building it in six units. That came in front of the planning board going back maybe some of the last year.
Memory Lane's off Diamond Spring Road, right? Where is Memory Lane located?
By the post office.
Off of Diamond Spring Road?
It's behind the other property we were talking about, the Redmond Press.
That's a different property.
Memory Lane?
Memory Lane is behind Food Town.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I'm not aware of anything on Diamond Spring Road. Nothing has come in front of the council.
Yeah, I realize there's enough room up there to build anything, behind Food Town at this point.
Yeah, there, there's a little dead-end street that runs off Memory Lane.
Okay.
Where I think they want to build six units.
But it's owned, it's owned now for single-family housing?
Yes, that's correct.
So they're seeking a variance?
Right. It was in front of the planning board last year and then, as far as I know, what was tabled, I think back and, back for review. Not been on, not been involved with the planning board, I don't know what to do.
Okay, thank you.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll write it down after to save time. Is regards to...
You tell them for the record?
I'm sorry, Dave Luer, Nyhawood Terrace.
Thank you.
In regards to the adding instructional time, you said, Mr. Forte, that we're looking at adding, going from the bottom to the middle by adding 25 minutes. That's going to push the school, that's going to push the school day from just over six and a half hours to over seven. And, and I mean, as it stands now, six and a half is, is pretty much too long for some of the kids. I know when my daughter started kindergarten last year, it was the first year of the, of the new, of the full-day kindergarten, she never was able to adjust to it and it was really hard on her the whole year. I mean, even the first half of first grade this year, she still wasn't really able to do it. So what, is there anything, is there any kind of metric that shows that our school district is suffering from having less instructional time than these other, I think you said, 15 districts? I mean, are we, are our scores lower? Are we having, are we seeing the kids having more problems?
Well, first, let me explain that. The instructional time not necessarily length of the school day. So there's, there's not a pickup of 25 minutes of the school, so the school will not go 25 minutes longer. By, by condensing some things and finding some areas that we're, that, that we felt like we could use the time more wisely, we picked up instructional time. So the, the difference in the school day, the length of the day for staff will be 10 minutes longer. But we are able to pick up 25 additional minutes due to the fact that when we, when we looked at our schedule, we saw some timing that it wasn't instructional and we now made it instructional. So you see it, there's instructional time and length of day.
So how much more time are the kids going to be spending in school?
The kids are, the kids are going to be spending somewhere around 10 minutes additional time in school.
Okay.
And, and your question about whether or not the time, you know, in relationship to the scores, well, the, the districts that, that you're competing with in I-Factor schools, there's very solid scores all around. So we have some areas that we could improve in as compared to those districts.
So there are places, there are places where we are not performing as well as other districts?
Exactly.
Are, are we focusing, are we planning on focusing this particular amount of time on those specific areas or are we just expanding it across the board?
No. One of the big things is the increase in, in amount of literacy instruction that will be next year. And it has to do with the way we rescheduled. Each student in some of the grades, not all of them, will receive three full periods, three 45-minute periods, I believe, of literacy instruction throughout the day, which is an increase. I don't have the current numbers, but it's an increase. And math instruction will be increased as well. And there will be, there will, basically what it is, is really using our time more efficiently. Adding 10 minutes to the day, but using it more efficiently to, and increase the areas. We're, we're focusing on literacy. It's a big movement right now in our district. So we've been spending a lot of time and resources on literacy instruction and we've moved towards the Columbia University project. It's called, it's called Readers and Writers Workshop. We're spending more and more time and money on that, so we're going to have more time allocated to that next year.
So where, the areas that you're taking time away from, from non-instructional time, does this include like recess or lunch or things like that?
No, no. Recession and lunch is not changed. If it is, it's, it's minor. It might be a couple minutes, but it's not, that's not where the pickup was. It was really in being inefficient. Like when you looked at the schedule, in the morning, there might have been 15, I'm just using an example. Say there was 25 minutes of time in the morning for drop-off and pickup, but we're only using 15. Now we reclaim that 10 minutes and added it into the day.
So you're basically cutting down on the time that all the buses have to drop people off and all the parents have if their kids miss the bus and stuff like that?
It's more, it's not as much about the drop-off time, it's about what they do in the building after they're dropped off. There's a significant amount of time where the kids are dropped off and they're in the, they're in the gym because the teacher's contract says that the teachers can't start teaching yet, but we made those changes in the teacher's contract, so now we can pick up some of that time as instructional time.
Okay, in Riverview, we, this past year, if I remember correctly, school instructional time started at 8:42.
I think so, yeah.
Basically looking at moving the time that instructional time starts earlier.
Right.
So the bus times are going to be roughly the same?
The bus times are roughly the same, correct. They are roughly the same. It's really just a, like I said, it's a matter of being a little more efficient.
And we'll receive information about the bus times with the regular cards that go out in, in August?
Unless, we're trying to automate that and use technology to do that. So we, we can do a post-guard, but we're hoping we can do it on Genesis. We, I know that you can do it on Genesis, it's just a matter of us doing it on Genesis. So I think that's the way we're going to do it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you. Patrick, huh?
Seth Johnson, 49 Lakewood Drive. It was mentioned that there were significant savings in some of the breakage and, and I know that Mrs. Deluna, last meeting, asked about exit interviews. So my question comes around some of the loss of, of great talent in, in the district. I know that some people have retired and some people have moved to other districts. The principal, Mr. A. left, Mr. Hoffman, who was a fantastic social studies here, teacher here, has moved to another district. Mrs. Pinto, a great math teacher, I believe is retired. Mrs. Schmidt, I believe is also retired, great language arts teacher. These are all people in the district that I know from personal experience from my kids that, that were fantastic teachers. My son had Mr. A. before he was a principal. So are exit interviews happening when people leave the district and is that being shared with the Personnel Committee?
The, I don't do any kind of formal process like an exit interview like that and I don't exit interview the retired people. I did, I did speak to anyone who was leaving the district to go for a lateral move or even a promotion, you know, just to talk about some of the things that, the reasons why. And then I, I shared some of the findings with them. I mean, the board, the board knows about my conversation with Mr. A. and shared that with them. So, yeah, sometimes I do that. It's not a formal process, though.
I, I think, not, not to say that there's anything wrong going, but if a teacher's leaving because they don't like the leadership in the district, that's something you're likely not to share with the board. So my question comes more as to how is the board and the district working towards finding out that information? Some of these people were, were great teachers and did not retire, so, and they may have left for a shorter commute.
Is there more than one that I don't know of?
I, no, I don't know that there is.
There's one that I know of. I, I mean, you're saying some of these teachers, plural. I know of one teacher.
Okay, one teacher and one administrator.
Right, the one administrator, right? I shared all that with the board. Everybody understood that.
And then the same with the, the people who are retiring. They may be retiring because the health benefits are changing, because the contract's changing. I think it's worth finding out from folks why they're leaving the dis, why they're leaving teaching if, if they're not, they're doing that as well.
Yeah, I also share with the board, the, the business administrator's reasons for leaving too. Because we had a business administrator leave for a lateral move too.
Okay. On the contracts, I think it's fantastic you guys closed all three contracts. That, that's great. What was the percentage that was given in the contracts? I watched the, the recording where they were proved and that that was not published, that was not stated.
The exact numbers were... Tamara, do you have the, what the exact numbers were?
I do not have them with me, no.
Yeah, I also share with the board, the, the business administrators' reasons for leaving too. Because we had a business administrator leave for a lateral move too.
Okay. On the contracts, I think it's fantastic you guys closed all three contracts. That, that's great. What was the percentage that was given in the contracts? I watched the, the recording where they were approved and that was not, that was not stated.
Do you have the, with the exact numbers for it?
I do not have them with me now.
Do we have a round?
We can get back.
I know, I know the, the last one for the DSSA was 2.83 for one year.
For one year.
That's the, that's the settlement for the DSSA.
I do believe that the administrators and the teachers...
The administrators settled for 2.83. The teachers was a little different. It was a little different structure, but it's similar to that. Very similar.
Could someone get back to me? Well, you must know what the percentages are.
Do you mind getting back to Seth?
Yeah. I'll send you an email tomorrow with, with the exact...
Great. And I know you guys got some concessions, getting them in the state plan. I think that's a fantastic thing, getting the longer days is gonna cost money, so I'm not here to, to complain, I just was curious. For the, the dollars around the pilot project, I think it is worth having a conversation with, with the town. When I spoke to them, when, I think when I was still on the board, one of the councilmen, they said that they, especially with Essling, they really did not anticipate a large student growth. But if that changed, they had the ability to take that money that they're going to get over five years and direct it, some of it to the schools. But I don't know that that's in the matrix that was referenced tonight and I think it's worth, that was a conversation, not a formal conversation. So I think it's worth the, the board following up on that. And regarding St. Clair's, maybe having a windfall with them going, becoming a private entity and paying more taxes, I think that's kind of irrelevant. If there are more kids coming into the schools, that those developers should be helping to pay for the infrastructure to support that. In other parts of the, the country, the development doesn't get built unless they fund building the schools. That doesn't happen in Denville and maybe probably not in New Jersey, but that does happen elsewhere. The last part is on the town hall. When we were looking to, at the opportunity of moving the board office into the town hall, one of the, the main things that, that prevented me from, there was a space constraint. But we also found on top of the expense of reformatting the building, that the town wanted us to pay for the heating and services of our percentage of the town hall and it was an exorbitant number. I, I won't use a number because I, I don't want to speak wrong.
Half the rent, yeah.
But it was, yeah, so, but it was, right, close to...
Half the rent.
If you took how much it took to, to do the construction and then what we're gonna pay every year for, for maintenance, it really wasn't a financially sound solution. And so hopefully you can come up with a better deal. I mean, we as taxpayers of Denville are paying to heat and cool that building anyways, but for it to come out of the school budget, I, I don't think that that's something that would make sense.
Yeah, the, the draft that we have identifies, I mean, lists that that would not be the case, that there would be no...
They had to change that.
It's a better deal.
No exchange in, in money like that.
Excellent.
Because, you know what, I mean, we, I, I explained to the town that, that the town uses our facilities all the time and we don't charge rent. The only time we charge rent to any organization is if it costs us money. Unless it's a for-profit that we, like we have the Yankees camp and we're getting rent for that. But anytime that, that somebody is, actually not just for-profit, but like Dwyer pays us rent now too, things like that. But the town uses our buildings like they run the summer plus. And there's, they're in the black a little bit on that, so, but we don't ask for rent back. So it's kind of like, you know, it's, it's, I'm a taxpayer too, so I guess your left pocket and your right pocket. So I think, I think we've really come to good terms on that. I don't see that as a stumbling block anymore and it's right in the draft agreement with the, with the town.
Excellent.
Because I agree with you Seth, if it wasn't that, I wouldn't even have been interested in it.
Good. That's a great change. And is the $55,000 a year a true number for the rental you're paying off from the board office?
It's gonna ramp up from 50 to 60 by the end of the terms of the lease.
What did we start at? Because when we were...
We started a lot lower, but, but it ramped up fast. I think that was part of it.
I was part of, on the board when we approved it.
I think it was 36.
It was, it was in the 30s when it started.
I thought it was 44, about a month, so...
Maybe 30 was the foundation. You know, we were definitely low.
We got a very good break on when we were at the foundation and so then we had a good break from these guys and then they were trying to catch up to market rate. We did the stuff, so.
Yeah, it actually is still below market rate.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Seth, I, I forgot, I'm out of training all day tomorrow, so it might be Wednesday when I get to you.
That's fine. No rush.
And these contracts are being worked on right now, all three contracts, by the attorney when they're finalized. The, the, the unions will have a chance to review them. Once they're official, we'll, then we'll publicize them the way we're supposed to.
So it's 10:08, I'm gonna close for public comment. Any board comments at 10:08?
I think one thing which won't be relevant for the people watching it if it gets close to Tuesday now, but probably should go with some notice, is that the date for filing, if you want to run for, and there's at least one open board seat, one board seat that someone's running to take their seat again, is I believe the 22nd or the 23rd, sometime this week. So it's only for people here.
Next Monday?
Oh, is it next Monday? Then it could be for people in the audience, the viewing audience.
Did we put that out or not? Did we put that on the website or anything?
I don't know. I'm gonna say next Monday.
And you now file with the county seat in Marst?
I don't think you're...
And I had a flashback to my childhood and I was about to name the childhood for my child, the county seat for my child. I was about to say, yeah, file on the free call, then I was like, wait, that's wrong.
Thank you for the reminder. I thought it was sometime next week too, but I'm...
I couldn't pull it, I tried to pull up the New Jersey's boards website. Maybe it is the 27th or the 23rd.
Any other board comments?
Just, just email.
I had a couple of quick ones, probably more until, in, just, I heard some of the discussions, I made some notes. And, you know, I, I think the overall, my overall comment is maybe to sort of Seth's point. We're a, we're a whole lot different than we were a year ago. A year ago, two years ago, you know, we were paying certainly rent and we were, you know, faced with this opportunity to go to a municipal building under completely unreasonable terms. And the terms now that I think, I don't know if John was part of it, but certainly you were part of and, and the board now has sort of seen are totally different, I think, much, much more favorable to the board and make a lot more sense than they were before. Certainly not the cost that we expected, not the monthly potential cost, nothing like